All right, we are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's meeting to order. And Christina, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any suggested changes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of their choosing. And... I guess Susan Young's going to be our first. Yes. Susan, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Susan Young, 9950 199th Street North in Forest Lake. And I'm here once again on behalf of the Rotary Plunge. First, I need to make an apology. Councilmember Valento is jumping this year. She is jumping with PEO, which is working toward international literacy. We appreciate that. We have 24 teams and we have 110 jumpers signed up so far. And we know that in this week, we're going to get a few more because everybody's like, oh, I thought you canceled it. No, we didn't cancel it. We have an alternate. Thank you to Abby and to Jamie for helping us with the plans, the police department, Public Works, the fire department. We have a pool. We will have our infamous tent, which we'll be heating starting the night before. And we are going to be jumping. We're going to have it livestreamed. We're going to have all of our typical festivities. So we're looking for folks to, A, still have time to form up a team, still have time to, to jump. There used to be a tradition that the whole council jumped, but just saying. We'll, we'll see what happens. We do want to invite folks to become spectators. It is a fun thing to watch. It's, it's a riot. We have a lot of folks that have already indicated that their teams will be costumed this year. And several teams have said that they're going to try and outdo the Inoka Car Care folks with the skits that they're putting on. So it should be a great event. We really appreciate the help of the city. It has been phenomenal. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan. Plunging or pledging, right?
Or both.
Or both. There you go. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening?
Mayor Bain, if I might note, there are some folks on the Zoom participation. And if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we can unmute you. It doesn't look like there anyone wants to participate.
Okay. Thank you. We will close open forum and bring the agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration, this evening is a fairly lengthy consent agenda. Once again, we have for your consideration consent agenda items 6A through 6O. Happy to entertain either a motion or any changes.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve consent agenda 6A through 6O.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our consent agenda is approved. We will move on to our regular agenda. Our first item this evening is regular agenda item 7A, which is Resolution 2122402, accepting a donation from Maury's Forest Lake Chevrolet. And Chief Newman, I believe you're walking us through this one.
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank Maury's Forest Lake Chevrolet publicly for their continued support of the Forest Lake Fire Department. Staff recommendation is to accept the donation resolution with gratitude.
Thank you, Chief. I would move that council approve Resolution 2122402, accepting donation from Maury's Forest Lake Chevrolet with gratitude. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and resolution is approved. Our next, next item is Resolution 7B, Resolution 2122403, accepting donations for the bridge lighting. And Kevin?
Mayor and City Council, in front of you is a resolution accepting donations for the bridge lighting for many individuals and businesses located in the city of Forest Lake. Staff recommends accepting the donations with gratitude.
Thank you, Kevin. I would move that council approve Resolution 12, 2122403, accepting donation for the bridge lighting from the various noted businesses and community members with gratitude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second from Councilmember Valento. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our resolution is approved. Next up, 7C, Forest Lake Rotary Winter Plunge Event Updates. And Abby?
Thank you, Mayor Bain, members of the council. As Susan Young had noted, the Rotary Plunge is on this weekend. We had been working through with event organizers for alternative plans off of the ice. We did also look at alternative plans out of the park, given the fact that the grass and the soil in the park is pretty moist. And we really wouldn't want to necessarily disrupt that parking or that park too much where we wouldn't be able to repair it. They've been favorable to moving it into the parking lot. We found some suitable locations that are, work for the event organizers, that work for all of their logistics as well as the city. So I did want to note, though, that the event organizers submitted a letter to the city council requesting waiver of the $50 outdoor entertainment permit fee. And that is requested before the council tonight. So should you be favorable to waiving the fee? Motion would be to waive the outdoor entertainment with permit, with tent permit fee and the amount of $50 for the Rotary Plunge.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we would waive the $50 fee for the 2024 Rotary Winter Plunge.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
As per usual, since I'm on the Rotary Board, I'm asking Amanda, should I abstain from voting on this since it has to do with fees?
Thank you, and your counsel. No, you don't have to abstain unless you want to.
Okay.
Any points of discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Any absentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to 7D, the 2024 Local Street Improvement Project, approve plans and specifications and authorization. I'm sorry, authorize, add to bid. And Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, we're here tonight just to do a quick presentation, just because we have a particular closure down here. We want to make sure you're aware of it prior to approving the plans and specs. So tonight's request, it will be approve the plans and specs and authorize after bid. On my memo, you have within your council packets, there are two revised dates. Our bid opening instead of March 1st is March 8th. And then instead of coming at the March 4th City Council meeting, we'll come to the March 25th City Council meeting for potential City Council award. One thing that's incorporated into this project are three alternates. It's hard to get see on this little screen, but we'll talk about them in detail on the next slide. So again, the project area locations are the Southview Development. That's just down here by the south water tower. Ideal Avenue, Scandia Trail. Ideal Avenue is the completion of a portion we've already started. We just, at that time of year, that's where that project ran out of budget. So we stopped the project, so we'll just continue that. And that work then comes out to the Highway 97. Ivywood Avenue, Forest Road, the Dresel Truck and Tire Iron area that's just south of here. And then Public Works has identified three alternatives they wanted to include in the plans and specifications to see where we come in with pricing. So if we stay within budget, we could potentially award these alternatives. Alternative, alternative one is 184th Streets. Include pavement replacement there. Alternate two is the Bridlewood Pathway. Repave an existing trail. That's to the school. And then alternate three would be the South Shop Parking Lots, pavement replacements. Project schedule, just in summary, City Council authorized preparation of plans and specifications October 9th. Anticipated approval of plans tonight. And then the project out for bid would be February 15th through March 8th. And then we'd have the bid opening March 8th with an anticipated award at the March 25th City Council meeting. Construction specified in the specifications is May 20th to August 30th of this construction season. Public outreach. Letters were sent out to the residents within the project boundaries in November of 2023 upon receiving City Council, Council approval. Only two residents emailed and called with questions about the project. Knowing how much work is going to be done in a tight corridor down here at the Tire Iron Bank, Dresel Trucking area, Bolton Mink staff went out and met with the affected business owners on the proposed area west of the Highway 97 roundabout there at 61. And we've accommodated their requests and made changes to the plans and specifications to make sure that we're on the same page in that area and we don't affect their businesses or at least as possible. Again, we'll reach out to the residents upon project moving forward with an anticipated schedule. And then obviously, once we have the pre-construction meeting with the contractor, we'll have a firm schedule that we can then communicate back again to. And with those notifications, they're always given a project inspector's name and number. So that way, if they have any questions by phone or email, they can contact that person 24 hours a day. So this is leading up to the Highway 97 and Scandia Trail closure. Public Works inquired about closing off that access at Highway 97. For safety and maintenance purposes, inquiries were made to MINDOT to access it since it's within their right-of-way. MINDOT supports the closure. It's part of their, actually their access management plan. Access would be closed by MINDOT in the future when they do come forward with the road project anyways. Residents on Scandia Trail were asked to call or email the project construction manager to let them know if they had any preferred completes, closure, write-in, write-out access, or left currently as it exists. Three residents have replied. One in favor of the closure, one in favor of leaving it as it exists, and one in favor of leaving it as it exists, but knowing it was going to be closed at some point in the future. Permit for the work, along with plans, has been sent to MINDOT for approval. If the council approves this closure, part of approving the plans tonight, we would move forward. Obviously, upon receiving approval from MINDOT direction or their permit, final permit. So this is the particular area we're talking about where that red arrow is pointed. That access would be closed and they still would have access right at Ideal. There are six homes along that corridor. So it's a pretty short stretch of roadway. Ideal is the main intersection for that area. There's a little more detailed area along the left, looking close to that area that would be closed. And on the right, you can see what it would look like upon construction completion. Kind of a mini turnaround area. Some additional signs would be put up for better awareness. So I just wanted to quickly go through that and highlight that. That's something a little different than our typical local maintenance pavement projects. So if we're supportive of that, with that project or an alternative to that, you know, now is our time to make that decision. Otherwise, we're here tonight to have the City Council approve plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid for the 2024 Local Street Improvement Project.
Thank you, Ryan. Counsel, what questions might we have for Ryan?
Yeah, thanks. When you said that two residents had had some feedback or reached out, was that just on that specifically on closing that access or was that just in general of all the projects?
That one in particular, a separate special notice was sent out to them to have them email the construction manager. Three residents of those six homes along that frontage road responded. One no, one yes. One was in favor, but would like to keep it as is, but know it's going to be closed in the future. And then the other three didn't respond because they're probably so close to Ideal Avenue.
Do you mind pulling up that, that intersection again? And this was, this was precipitated, again, based on the access study with MINDOT. Is that right?
Public Works has brought it up too because of just maintenance and knowing we would be dealing with it in the future. This is an easy removal at this point, since we're doing the pavement, removing replacement entirely. So safety improvements, obviously, we're channeling traffic back to a more defined intersection. So you're going to improve safety and you're going to reduce maintenance on Public Works.
Counsel, any other questions or points of feedback for the overall planned projects? For this one in particular?
Just with the size of that proposed turnaround, I mean, any concerns from Public Works for safety getting in there?
Well, it sure seems to make sense, but I mean, you only had, what, a couple people that were concerned about it at all? And with one definite no, right?
Correct.
It is an opportunity, an opportunity to reduce access to 97, which has been problematic in that corridor. And now is, now is the time to do it if we're going to do it. So I appreciate staff bringing it forward.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, you know, a little bit inconvenience there for maybe some of those. But I, if I was living there and I had my children trying to turn into there, I'd, I'd want more of a controlled access than what's there currently.
The, so Ryan, you highlighted in your comments, feedback on this. Any other particular areas of feedback that were received on other projects?
The area south of here, the Tire Iron, Dresel Trucking. We had, we personally worked with them to scope the project contract requirements, the staging, so they did not lose access to their business and not, or when they do, they know, right? We don't want to have a surprise come construction season with them. So now is our ability and time to put stuff within the contract. So the contractor knows he'll bid accordingly to do that project area. And then it's just easier. We all go out in the field. We know what the outline requirements are. And the business owners know what efforts we've gone to to try to ease any inconvenience for them.
And while I don't think anyone's excited about construction, were you able to get us to a spot of agreement or to a comfortable place with those property owners?
Yep. So we'll be replacing the pavement in that area. There's actually one area, just because it's so flat for drainage, we'll have to actually install curb and gutter for about 140 feet or so.
Okay. It's definitely an area that needs, needs some improvement, so. Any other questions or points of feedback for Ryan?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, it sounds like we are.
So just, yeah, the motion on this, but then will we, as far as those alternative options with the trail and these are different streets, how does that, is that a separate motion or is that just wait and see how the bids?
So they're, they're in the project bid, but let's just say they are way over budgets and just the base bid. The base bid is the everything other than the alternatives, right? So alternative one, alternative two, and alternative three are all separated out. You'll know what exactly costs on the bid. So we can come back to the City Council and say, our recommendation is to award the base bid. If budget allows, we could go alternate one. If budget still allows, we could go alternate two. Or maybe you're short $20,000 and you want to take that chance to construction, construction in quantities. Or we could work with city staff if there is additional funds available to award, to award alternates. We just don't know at this time until we go out and solicit the bids. We're in the no obligation where we have to award an alternate part of the base bid. Or even you don't even have to award the base bid if, let's just say, something really weird happens. You still have that ability not to award the contract.
And just, just to drill it down a little bit more, that 184th, the, the base bid is pretty much, they figure it'll come under budget. 184th should probably still be under budget. But if you keep it in the base bid, then you might have to throw it all out if you don't go under budget. The M Health or the South Parking Lot is going to be a cost share with M Health. So we're just trying to get a price for that to see, to start those talks with M Health. And the same with the Bridle Pass path is, we really don't know the exact cost. So to be able to start that with HOA and the school to have an idea of what costs are there. So this is an easy way to find those numbers and make a decision later.
So that, I was going to ask Dave, is that, is, I had a resident reach out to me and that, is that the path we're talking about?
Yep.
Okay. And so we have, we have to start talks with the HOA or have we or?
So I've been talking with the HOA and the school district, but nobody really wants to talk about it until they know what the actual numbers are. You know, it's kind of hard to talk about percentage splits or who owns what or what it's going to cost until you know what it's going to cost, so.
That's the problem, until you get the bids out.
Yeah, I mean, you can do an estimate. I mean, we've done an estimate, but until you get actual raw numbers, you don't, you don't want to start throwing ideas out until you know what that, that's going to be. So this is one easy way to attach it as an alternate on a bid, and then you have somewhere to work with.
So just to kind of get the council up to speeds, I had a couple residents reach out that live in that neighborhood that, and that trail connects to the, the middle school. It's used a lot by just residents and kids going back and forth to school. And so they're, the conversation started about actually maintaining, plowing it. But then more, then, you know, Dave pointed out it was in such rough shape that something had to be done. So I think that would be great if we could work with them in the school district. I know Jill Christensen's in the, in the audience there, so if you could, you know, it'd be nice to work with the school district on, on that trail.
So timing for, timing for making that decision would be, once bids are back, right? And we are able to see costs and get all parties at the table to see what that might look like?
And it may not even be this year, right? I mean, it may be, okay, now we know what it's, it costs, and then that's a starting point. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be with this project, but at least you have a number. You know what the work's going to entail, and then at least that starts. Because there's going to be, right now it's on private property, so there'd be, you'd have to make a, get a trail easement. You know, some survey work and actually get a public trail easement over that. So there's a lot more moving pieces, but just getting a, a lot better number is way helpful for all of us.
Thanks for doing that.
Good. Any other points of discussion or questions? All right. Councilmember Husnick, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve the plan specification, authorize advertisement for bids as described by Ryan.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Valento. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of 7E, Ordinance 734, the 2024 Fee Schedule Revisions. And Abby?
Thank you, Mayor Bain, members of the council. You may remember at the end of 2023, you repealed and replaced your fee schedule. That's an annual thing we do each year. There was one error in that we increased our fingerprinting fee a little excessively high. So from 25 to 50, we're bumping it down to $30. It's really consistent with kind of the market going rate for fingerprinting, so to say. There was a couple changes that were needed because of our online building permitting program. So the software isn't really allowing users to distinguish with multiple different types of siding and roofing permits. So we're doing flat rate fee for residential and commercial for $110 for each of those. I know that the council really does like to have those separate fees for residential and commercial, thinking we should have a subsidized cost or a lower cost for residential. Unfortunately, the software and, just does not allow for it with the online permitting feature. And then just two changes with parks, park use. We just, we, we moved a couple things around. Removed a couple words and also put in the ability for the city to not apply fees when we've entered into a user agreement. So for example, we enter into an agreement with FLA for their use of the, our facilities, and they pay fees as part of that use agreement. We wouldn't double charge them. The other one would be for park dedication fees. Again, it's just a little bit of code, our language cleanup that we have a fee estimate. And in our Ordinance 730, we indicated that that estimate for residential properties is $500 per unit or per lot. That is low compared to the estimates that are coming in. We had had $2,500 as the estimate in the past. We just moved that back to 2,500. Again, each parkland dedication is based on an individualized assessment. That is an estimate. It could go higher, it could go lower, but we wanted to have it a little bit more on par with what the actual fees are. So if the council's favorable to the proposed schedule, those just kind of being a little bit of air cleanup, some cleanup with that online building permitting program and some clarity. The council should move to approve Ordinance Number 730 and Ordinance repealing and replacing City Code Chapter 35 fees and service charges.
Thank you, Abby. Bring it to council. Counsel, any questions, comments, feedback on the proposed changes?
Sounds like a little bit of house cleaning going on, basically.
One question, maybe a highlight. When we change the commercial and residential on those, on the building permits, did we make it, do we default to the lower rate? Looks like we defaulted to the higher rate.
We defaulted to the higher rate. I was just asked to incorporate the change. Chief Newman might be able to address why we've gone with the higher rate. I don't know.
Chief Newman, any perspective?
Mayor, members of the council, I do not have the specific information on that change. It had more to do with multiple permits instead of just one. Our system doesn't allow you to have multiple permits under one permit, and that's what the change was for.
I should note, I may be misrepresented, and I apologize. I was thinking it was between residential and commercial. It has to do with single family versus multifamily. So a single-family lot is 110, where a multifamily is $60 per unit. So if you had a fourplex, that permit would have actually been 240. So it is, I actually think, probably the lower cost, given the fact that one unit only costs 110. Two units start to be 120 or more. So does that make sense? I misrepresented that. I apologize.
Counsel, any feedback or questions on that?
No, I mean, most of our building permits, I guess, are for single families, so it's staying consistent with what was. So no one's getting hurt. I just want to clarify, is this Ordinance Number 734 or 730?
I imagine it is 734. I apologize because I probably used my Ordinance 730 the previous. Ordinance 734, repealing and replacing the City Code Chapter 35.
Any other questions or points of feedback?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 734 and Ordinance repealing and replacing City Code Chapter 35 fees and service charges.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. All right, our next item is job description and, job description for clerk and posting. And Christina?
Mayor and council, we started this discussion at our last meeting. As you know, the deputy clerk position has been vacant since last fall. The city has undertaken a staffing study by David John and Associates. You'll hear about later on in the meeting, but at our last meeting, we did talk about creating a city clerk position and, and filling that rather than the deputy clerk, meaning that the city administrator would no longer hold the administrator slash clerk title, but you would put those mostly statutory duties onto a different person. And so in your packet tonight is a proposed job description. I was able to gather job descriptions from eight of your comparable cities to draft this one, as well as getting some feedback from your staff and had it reviewed by the labor attorney. The job descriptions include duties in the areas of council and administration support, records, administration, licensing, elections, and communications. It also includes some proposed minimum requirements for the city clerk role, such as a two-year degree or three to five years of public administration experience or equivalent of experience and education, valid driver's license, and the ability to obtain some of the licenses and certifications. Also, once, when I contacted those comparable cities, I got their salary information. And when I take the average of the ranges, each of them provided me with their, their range for the, for the grade, it, it comes out to about grade 13. it, it comes out to about grade 13 on our non-union wage scale, which would be a salary of just over 86,000 to 110,000. This is more than what the deputy clerk was at. Total cost for the position will be dependent upon who fills it, since there are five steps in that grade. Could range anywhere from about 122,000 to just over 147,000. The 2024 budget included about 111,000 for the deputy clerk, but given that we're going to be starting this position later in this year, there won't be a budgetary impact that we're expecting for 2024. I did include a copy of the deputy clerk's job description in the packet, too, just so you could kind of see how we've really beefed up this position and given this person all, all of those duties and responsibilities rather than mainly assisting with things. And so I'm happy to answer any questions and hope that you would support the job description and posting that position.
And just for clarity, clarity of process, months ago, when we've considered this position, we had talked about potentially having it be outsourced and, or recruiting for that, using a recruiting firm to search. And is it still your plan that that would be an internal search that you would lead? Is that?
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable leading searches.
Okay, and I guess, council, if we have any hesitation or if we want to reconsider that, that would be a great, great time to bring that into the conversation as well. Any? So with that, we'll just open it up for general questions, comments related to the city clerk position?
It's overdue. So it should be pretty simple, I would think.
Any hesitation or thoughts on moving maybe from the deputy clerk position to a city clerk and you know, we, we workshopped that in our last meeting, but any other follow-up thoughts or hesitation?
I think it sounds like most cities our size are doing this model, so that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I agree, and also like the, there's a lot of administrative tasks that fall into this job, and so splitting that out from our city administrator, I think is just a better use of skill set and allows for focus on the city administrator to be on other things, so. All right, and then anything specific around job description and potential salary ranges that are out there? Christine, I appreciate you reaching out to neighboring communities and doing kind of a good read on market. Any feedback from council?
No, it's a very robust job description, so, well done.
All right. Any other points of comment?
There's none. I'll make a motion to approve the city clerk job description as presented and authorize staff to advertise the position at grade 13 on the non-union wage schedule.
Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And just a quick point of clarification, and Christine, maybe you mentioned this, the thought would be to post this immediately and to get started immediately. Is that the next step?
Yeah, hopefully this week we'll get it posted on our website and the League of Minnesota Cities website and other places that we can find, correct?
Very good, thank you. All right, with that, any other discussion points? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. All right, our next item is Item 7G, the selection of the city administrator search firm?
Yes, thank you, council. Previously sent to you via email by myself were four proposals from four different search firms, DDA, Human Resources, Baker Tilly, USA, Gov HR, and Express Employment Professionals. Tonight, there is a representative from each of the four firms here for you. I believe one is virtual and three are here. One is in the room and two are out in the hallway. So they are here to present just sort of a brief summary on how they would go about the city administrator search and then be available for questions from council. So my thought is that we would go ahead and start with DDA as they're here in the room, and I'll pop out to quick grab the next two candidates. At the end of the presentations, I will be asking council to direct staff to pick one of the firms, or directing, requesting council pick one of the firms, and then direct staff to work with that firm to start the city administrator search.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda, and welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, mayor, council members. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Bart Fisher. I work for the firm DDA HR. I actually believe I've had the opportunity to talk to each of you either in a virtual meeting or on the phone in regards to a item coming up later on in the agenda. But a little bit about DDA, we are a Minnesota-based firm that provides full-service consulting with more than 25 years of experience serving local governments in the areas of fiscal and economic development, executive search, organizational analysis, as well as comp and class studies. We have served over, done the executive recruitment for over 125 Minnesota cities and counties to this point. We know and understand Minnesota local government, and that really does guide and will continue to guide our work as we move into the future. A little bit about me. Personally, I guess, I live just on the other end of the county in Cottage Grove, which, as we know, Washington County is rather large, right? And I live there with my wife and three kids. My experience, I've been the assistant administrator in the cities of Newport as well as Chaska, and then I've been the city administrator in Falcon Heights and Oakdale. And most recently, before joining DDA, I actually was working with a design and consulting firm very similar to the one that Ryan is part of by the name of WSB. I still take part in Minnesota City County Managers Association, as well as the International City County Managers Association and League of Minnesota Cities as well. Our approach to conducting executive searches such as this is actually really quite simple, and we try to keep it simple for you. Our focus is on finding the best fit for you in a very timely manner. And this starts with sitting down with each of you, even designated staff folks as well, to really try to understand and set the foundation for establishing where goals, attributes, what you want to see in your next city administrator. From that information, we develop a position and community profile of which will be approved by you, the council, and at this point, we have that set for March 11th. I'd come back to that meeting, present that profile to you for approval and, and start the process. Then we would start the candidate recruitment process. We allow about four weeks to do that properly and robustly. Within DDA, we all have our networks and connections across the state, even across the country for city administrator candidates, but we also have a very robust LinkedIn tools that help us recruit candidates, really again, across the state, region, and the country as well, based on those attributes that you want to see in your next administrator. And then we also have an extensive network of recruiting websites that we post the profile to. I mean, for example, such as Christine already mentioned, like the League of Minnesota Cities, but we can go beyond that as well, so. When the recruitment process closes, we will analyze candidates to determine the semifinalists that we feel are the best fit for you as an organization. From there, the semifinalists will complete an online video interview and a work-related personality index. After that, approximately one week prior to you selecting finalists from that semifinalist list, you will get all of that information, all of their application information, the videos, as well as the work-related personality index. We do anticipate that at your 11th, April 11th meeting, I'm sorry, April 22nd meeting, the council will come together and then select finalists to be interviewed at a later date. We do the job of notifying those semifinalists that did not move on in the process, and then we also start to go through a backgrounding process and then have the finalists complete an intellectual profile, and then we start doing reference checks. It's pretty exten, very extensive reference checks on the finalist as well. And then all that information will be provided to you about a week before the interview process, which we have scheduled for the week of May 21st, at least at this point in time. That can be flexible, obviously. Immediately following the interviews, you obviously will select a candidate, and this is up to you. We do also provide service to help facilitate and/or help negotiate the contract with the, or the offer with the, with the candidate. Some cities like to take us up on that. Other clients like the, like the city attorney to handle that, or a couple of you and the council to handle that. One way or another, we can help facilitate that process. All of this, we look to have done and have a new administrator in place for you by, in either June or July. Sometimes that depends upon the candidate and where they're coming from and how much notice they have to give, things like that. Couple last items to just update you on or let you know. I will be sending, as the lead on this project, I would send weekly emails, pretty much weekly emails, just updating you on where we're at, where things are at with the process, next steps, those kind of things. And then one last thing we'd like to mention is that we actually do provide a two-year guarantee. So if the candidate that you provide an offer to comes in, decides to leave for some reason within that two-year period, we will redo that search for you. With that, mayor, council members, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Bart. Council, any questions that we may have this evening? One question that has just come up as we've contemplated this process, and your, maybe your proposal touched on it, and I'm not recalling, so if you could refresh my memory. Your plan or thoughts on incorporating feedback from the community into this process of introducing candidates to the community and getting some, some broader input beyond just this, this body? So how does that fit into your process?
Sure, yes. Thanks for the question, mayor. And to address that, we really leave the day, the day, the interview day very flexible and, and really up to you how you want to, what you want to incorporate into that day and how you want to incorporate that. So I guess the short answer, mayor, is yes. If you want community involvement in this process, we can certainly set up some type of, type of community meet and greet or a community panel, something like that on that interview day.
And is that something you commonly do? Is that something commonly requested?
That's a great question, mayor. I, I would say, from my experience, it's kind of almost a little bit, maybe like 50/50, half and half. It really, really depends upon the community and what they're, what they desire and what they're looking for.
Understood. I don't have, go ahead.
A question on the two-year guarantee, what if it, is that also in effect if it's not a right fit for the city and we decide to move that that wasn't the right hire, is that part of the two-year? Were able to find someone else within that time or not?
Yes, Councilmember Roberts said is correct, yes.
Any other questions from Mr. Fisher? All right, thank you for making the trek up here this evening. We appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, honor council. The, the next applicant will be Carl from, sorry, from Express Employment Professionals. He is remote, and so I think we're getting him queued up.
Carl, you can go ahead.
Carl, can you hear us? Carl, I see you're on. You're on, I think you're unmuted on our end, so you just need to speak. I see your hand is raised. You're, you're welcome to go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm texting him.
Why don't I go grab, go grab the next candidate?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're ready as soon as you are, but take your time.
Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for inviting me to be here tonight to talk about my proposal. I know I only have a couple minutes just to kind of give you an overview of what you have read in the proposal. You have the proposal in front of you and the details, but just a kind of
Sorry, just a quick point, this Baker Tilly, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Patty Heavenover from Baker Tilly, and we aren't going in order, so I do apologize for not introducing myself. We are a national search. We've been around for many years, all of us. There's 10 of us in, in our department. All of the directors, we all have worked in the public sector for our, our careers, and we've been there and we do searches all over the United States. What we like is we've got, we've worked in about 42 different states, so we know a lot of people and candidates for positions. How we, how we work with our searches is we start out and we meet with the council. We also meet with the leadership group. And the reason why that's really important for us is we need to get as much information about what you're looking for in the position. And then we like to hear from the leadership because I want to understand the culture within the, the city and to understand what they're looking for also. They're not making the decision, but to understand when we put the brochure together. And then we'll develop a brochure, and then we will go out and do a, a national search. And then what we will then do is put together a questionnaire. The questionnaire goes into what you're looking for. Goes into a lot more detail about their experiences in areas that you think are important. And then we also provide the candidates, the highly qualified candidates, a due diligence report, and we ask them questions like talking about the salary, making sure that they're comfortable with the salary, if they're having any issues with what is publicized. And then if they've had any terminations, if they've had any separation agreements, we want to know that ahead of time before we do a, a search on these individuals. And then we will ask them to do a one-way interview. So through this process, what you would then, let me back up. While we're out there, we'll be advertising for about a month. And we'll be providing you with up, weekly updates. We will be showing you where we are within our timeline that we've discussed and had you guys take a look at. It, it shows some of the candidates, not their names, but how many candidates that we have, where we're advertising, how many connections we've had through that week. So you're constantly seeing some updates on the progress of how we're going along with this. So what you would end up getting from us would be like a semifinalist electronic or a book like this. And we will provide you with the semifinalist in there. And what you would be seeing is each of the candidates by number, you will have their copies of their resume, their cover letter, their questionnaires, all in here. And then you would have the link to the, the videos to review. Then what we will then do is work with you to decide which candidates would be moving forward for interviews. Then from there, we're there helping you to develop the interview questions, the schedule. We're here from the very beginning to the very end of the process. And say, for instance, you get to the very end and maybe someone, our top candidate, were to drop out. Then we talk about what the options are. Do we want to continue to go out and advertise? Because what I don't want my client to ever think is they have to settle for a second. We want you to make sure that you're comfortable, all of you, with the candidate that you would want to bring forward as your leader. And what we will also then do is help you with the interviews and get those set up. And what we then do, from each of the And what we then do, from each of the interview panels that we have set up, we will design a document that they can fill out and they can then provide information back to the council before you actually interview the candidate too. They can't rank them, but they can provide some good information back to the council. So we really like that piece of it, too. So ours is an all-inclusive, from the very beginning through our whole vetting process to the very end, and we're there for you through this whole process. So that's just a little bit about where we are with our process. I know that you probably have questions for me, and I'd be more than happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, let's just open it up. What questions might we have for Patty? Any questions for Patty?
I will, so one of the things we talked about is level of community involvement in this selection, and so talk, talk us through what that looks like for you on gathering community input and how do we embed that into this process?
Very good question, and this is something that every client is a little bit different on how they want their, how to get input from the community. In our proposal, we do have that you, we can do a community survey that we can get out, and we can also have, develop community outreach, that we do have input from different areas within the community that I'm there, I'm facilitating, and to get feedback back to the council. So it is designed around what is important to you to get that feedback. The only problem is, is when we do have public forums that they're welcome to come in, we don't always get the participation that we want. That's why we try to reach out other ways, like through a survey. And we can put it on your website. We use QR codes. So you could flash it up at your council meetings, and all they have to do is put their phone up there and they can start taking the, the survey. So there's a lot of different ways that we can capture input, but we have to work with you on what makes sense, but we've got the capacity to do that for you.
Thank you. Any other questions that we may have?
All right. Your proposal was very thorough. Thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much, and we would, we would be honored to help you in your search and, and hopefully, no matter what you do, you're going to have, you've got really good, really good firms out there, but we would love to, to participate in helping you find one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try to unmute Carl on his telephone now. Carl, you can go ahead
Is Carl able to hear us?
He was able to hear and see, but he wasn't able to.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Oh, we do. We can hear you now.
Welcome.
All right. Can you hear me now? Well, thank you. Sorry about that. I could see everyone and hear you, and I'm sitting here waving my arms around and going, what is going on? I apologize for that and, and thank you for having me here on the meeting virtually. I'm over in northeast Blaine. I was in Forest Lake all day today, right by the, the city hall there at my business. And I'm just, I'll start off with a little bit of background. So I, I grew up in Shoreview. We started a business in Forest Lake in 2015. We're in the, basically the strip mall directly south of the city building there. And we, we're part of Express Employment Professionals. So Express has been around over 400 different, just locally. Our firm, we are part of six different offices. We have five of those branded under Express Employment, and one of our offices in Stillwater is branded over, under our professional search division, which is called the Specialized Recruiting Group. So Express on the whole has over 800 offices. Our sixth office franchise was ranked number 10 in the entire company last year, and our search firm, Specialized Recruiting Group in Stillwater, ended up being number one in total revenue and direct hire search in the entire company. So we're fairly proud of that, and I feel like this is a, a search that our team could take on. I do a lot of community work in Forest Lake, volunteer for a number of organizations. I'm on the Forest Lake Chamber of Commerce Board. I'm on the Community Scholarship Foundation Board, and we also sponsor a scholarship for local Forest Lake students. I've helped out with the Lions Club, different events, and I'm with, also on the board for the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association, which is an association that works with the industry and education and some lobbying at the Capitol on behalf of our industry. So that's just a little bit of background on me. Our team, so our, our flagship office is in Red Wing within our local franchise founded in 1991. We have been in the professional search business since the mid 90s. We ended up starting our Stillwater office as a standalone office. We now have nine recruiters over there, and we started that as a standalone office in 2022, but we've been doing it for a lot longer than that. And our ownership group there has over 50 years of recruiting experience. Myself, I've been with Express for over 10 years. On the whole, across the United States nationally, in 2023, we placed over 37,000 people into administrative roles, over 11,000 into human resources roles, between accounting and clerical roles, over 40,000 different positions filled across our company. So these are, are right in our wheelhouse of the types of work that we've done. As far as our search process, it's going to be fairly similar to some of my counterparts that you've heard from already. We start with taking a, a very thorough job description and sitting down with each member of, of the council to determine some of the things that don't necessarily show up in a job description, but that are really important as far as culture, experience, skillset, those types of things, and create a full candidate profile of what you're looking for before using some tools. We also have, like all of our recruiters have LinkedIn seats for their searches. We use a, a platform called Zoom Info, which enables us to find more ways to contact candidates. And we go out there and we'd, we'd start by, with a more local search, slowly expanding out that circle, going statewide and then regionally and nationally if need be, to find that right candidate that matches that profile that we're given. Similarly, we go through a thorough interview process, reference checks, and then narrow it down to a short list of candidates who we feel very strongly fit the, the parameters that you've given us and the, the culture fit and those types of things before presenting those to the council. And then you would elect to move forward with whichever candidate you would like to interview personally, and then we're, we're able to match our selection process then from there, based on the interview process that you would like to see. As far as timeline goes, long story short, I think, you know, if we're fairly efficient with the timeline, and a lot of that is based on the pace at which the council and, and the city is able to move, but I'm projecting kind of a late April timeframe for finding that right individual and depending on the amount of notice that they need to give before leaving their current post and those types of things, probably towards the end of April Beyond that, our, our interview process is ISO certified. We are independently audited by a third-party company called ISO, and they, they go and audit through express offices every single year to ensure that we're following the interview process that we say that we're following. So that's just a, a little bit of third-party verification. Beyond that, I'm, I'm open to hearing any questions, and I think as far as the price proposal that we've given, hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at that, but we do would match that two-year guarantee period, and that's whether voluntary or involuntarily leaving, we guarantee a replacement or full money back on, on that price. I just appreciate, you know, your time and consideration and let me know any sorts of questions if you have.
Thank you, Carl. Counsel, let's open it up. What questions may you have? Any questions?
Carl, one of the topics of interest that council's talked about is part of incorporating and part of this process is opportunities for community feedback, either meeting the candidate directly or having opportunities to just input into general kind of characteristics of the candidate. How might you guide us in incorporating that feedback, or how might you recommend we proceed? What does your approach look like?
Yeah, good question, and likewise, I mean, we have performed like panel interviews and things of that nature. We'd, we'd be open to, you know, in putting that into our interview process. We also can do surveys and, and collect data. Like our express office in Forest Lake, we have over 12,000 people on file with us who are not all Forest Lake residents, but a good percentage of them are Forest Lake residents. We can send out surveys, things of that nature, using some of the, you know, the local folks that we have already on file with us. Beyond that, you're talking about in the interview process, trying to get like community involvement, like some sort of a, maybe an open forum where, where community members could ask questions as part of a panel? Is that what you're leading towards?
Or I guess I'm interested in either that or your experience on what else you've seen work in other communities?
Sure, and we, we've done lots of different types of searches. I have not, you know, personally set up a, like a community panel like this where you'd have people from the community coming in, but we'd be more than open to working with that.
Fair. Thank you. And just one other point, because I wasn't, I'm not sure if it was clear in your proposal. I missed it, and if so, I apologize. Who from your firm would be, would be primary on leading the search?
That'd be, Casey would be leading the search, and we'd probably have a few different recruiters involved there, but he's our, our managing partner. He's, he grew up over in Shoreview. It's a guy that I've known for over 30 years, and he would most likely be leading the search's point of contact for the city with multiple people from our team potentially working on, on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel, any other, any other questions for Carl? All right. Hey, thank you for being here tonight. I'm glad the technology worked out.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm Charlene Stevens. I'm with GovHR USA. Really happy to be here this evening and have an opportunity to kind of tell you a little bit about GovHR USA and our services. So I am Charlene Stevens. I'm Executive Vice President for Recruitment Services for GovHR. I've been with the firm full-time since 2019, and I've taken over leadership of our executive recruitment services since earlier this summer, actually. And so, a few things about GovHR, and we have recently combined with MGT America, which is based out of Tampa, but our entire firm is, came over in that transition. So we're a public management and, public management recruitment and consulting firm, and we work exclusively with local governments. Our firm is made up of all former local government professionals and executives who have a passion for local government. We have clients in about 45 states, and we have almost 40 consultants that are located kind of coast to coast. And so, one of the advantages, I think, that we provide you is we provide you kind of local connection. I'm a, I'm a South Washington County resident and have spent a lot of my career in Minnesota, and so I bring kind of the local touch to it with also bringing kind of a national recruitment. As a firm, we've done over 1,200 recruitments in our 10 years, and last year alone, we did about 140 chief executive officer recruitments. Myself, I've done over 70 recruitments since I joined the firm full-time in 2019. About a third of those has been in Minnesota, and then I've also worked nationally. A little bit about myself, in addition to kind of residing in Washington County and being familiar very much with the East Metro, I've had leadership roles. I served in the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors. I served on the Coalition of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors. I've also served nationally in our Professional Association of ICMA on their Board of Directors. So I have an extensive professional and personal network, and I think that that benefits any city that I'm working with in terms of their recruitment, because I can draw upon that as well for candidates. Just a little bit about how we kind of approach our work is we really try to partner with you throughout the recruitment. So we have a process, but of course, we tailor and customize that process to really be what you need and wish in the recruitment. We deliver our services kind of on time with, with integrity and trust in the process, and, and that goes both ways, not just for the client, which is the city, but also when we're working with candidates. We've developed a high regard and high trust with candidates as well, that they know that we will be candid with them in the process as well. And we're very candid with you, the client, and give you a very honest assessment of candidates as we review them. And so we're not trying to push candidates on you. We're really trying to find the best fit for you. We're very committed to communication, and so I'm very much available during the process by cellphone, by text, you know, email, and give regular updates along the recruitment as well. We encourage you to kind of talk to any of our previous clients. We've gotten over 94% satisfaction rate by our clients. Many of our clients, at least a third of them, have hired us for one or more recruitments as well, or two or three recruitments. So we have multiple, and we think that really kind of speaks to our kind of quality and our, and our process as well. And so the way we tailor our process is we really start on the front end, trying to understand you as an organization and as a community and such. And so while I may be familiar with Forest Lake, my kids play sports in the, in the same conference and such, but I don't assume to know your community. And so take time to interview you as a council, interview some key staff or other key stakeholders, and really try to understand the organization, and then tailor the recruitment materials that way, and tailor the recruitment that way as well, and look for candidates that are really going to be a good match and fit for you. And then also vet those candidates. So we do some of the things that we maybe do a little differently than some of our competitors, is we do a 45-minute to an hour Zoom interview or a virtual interview with prospective candidates. And so we take in all of the applications and the materials, and then maybe narrow that down to probably eight to 10 candidates that we feel are going to be good, mostly suited to the organization, and then spend time talking with those candidates to really kind of vet their experience and really understand kind of the enthusiasm, the energy, and have a two-way conversation with them as well. And then we do media searches. We do initial reference checks on candidates as well. We try to have that, at least two references on candidates before we bring them forward for you, so that you're not surprised, and the same with the media search. And it doesn't mean that media is, is, can be negative sometimes, or can anybody in the public sector, as I like to say, can certainly experience some negative media. I see some nods. I'm sure you have as well, but it doesn't mean that that's not a reason not to consider someone. We just want to make sure that you understand, and we've had a chance also to talk to that candidate about that and get their perspective on it as well. And then we'll help you also facilitate the entire interview process and stay with you through that entire process as well. And so, and that's the logistics of it. That's providing interview questions, being on-site during the interviews to help facilitate that process as well, and then we conduct the back, final background check on the candidates, and then we'll stay with you through the, through negotiations, working with your city attorney or whomever you designate to kind of bring the candidate on board as well. And then we do guarantee our placement, in this case for two years, for our recruitments, and that means if the candidate leaves for any time during that two-year period, we would come back and conduct the search again for you at only kind of consultant expenses and advertising costs. And we also are committed to staying with you until you find the right candidate. So if we go through that initial kind of search, and whether those maybe aren't the right fit for you, or maybe you just can't come to an agreement with, with your top choice, then we'll continue the search for you and continue to bring forward additional candidates for you as well. And so, you know, I think that our process works very well. We've been very successful at that process. A couple of other things I just want to say kind of in summary about it is that I think our outreach really does differentiate us as well. So we have over 17,000 views to our career page alone per month, and so that's just our GovHR career page as well. We use a lot of different outreach and LinkedIn as well, and I think the depth and the experience that we have in recruitment also lets us draw more candidates, both nationally and locally as well. And then our reputation kind of, again, results in about 17,000 visits to our website alone, and so that's what's in where we're posting positions as well. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, let's open it up. Any questions that you may have for Charlene? Any questions?
One of the topics that we've talked about as a council is gauging level of community input or somehow bringing community into this process. This candidate obviously is community-facing, and that's important. How have you seen that successfully done in other searches, and how might you guide us in that endeavor?
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways. Yeah, there's a couple of different ways. And certainly kind of you always, I always say that you know your community best, and so you know it will be effective. So we've done, I have done community engagement in a few different ways. We've done community surveys, and so we've developed a survey that can be put out into the community and then use that as one way to garner feedback. I've also interviewed some key stakeholders, so sometimes those are community partners, be those maybe chamber director or an ED, Economic Development Director, or maybe even just some key business leaders to get some additional perspectives. In that process, school superintendent, some of those are also sometimes maybe partners that you work with. And so also engaging them on the front end in that conversation about what you're looking for in the next city administrator. And sometimes it's not just the skill set you're looking for, but it's also the leadership style or the communication style, and we try to get at that as well. And then sometimes you can also involve them kind of on the interview side, on the backend. And so once you've narrowed down the candidates you want to bring forward to the community, I've involved those individuals in different panels. And so we've had a community stakeholder panel as part of the interview process as well. Sometimes we've done community presentations for candidates. So there's lots of different ways that we've found that can be effective about it. I think if you're trying to be as broad-based, a survey certainly out to the community is one of the most broad-based ways to get that input, and then maybe engaging a few individuals as stakeholders during the interview process. But we're happy to facilitate, I'm happy to facilitate that in any way that works, and I've done it in a lot of different ways.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Any other questions we may have, counsel? Your proposal is very thorough, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd love to have the opportunity to work with you and wish you the best, no matter who you choose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Amanda, any wrap-up comments or any other points of feedback before you toss it over to us?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tag, you're it.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you for teeing this up. I know it's been a lot of work and appreciate all of the information that you've given to us for this process. Counsel, let's just open it up. Feedback, requested action for counsel tonight is to select a search firm. I'm open to any number of ways to, I don't care how we get to an answer. The only thing I care about tonight is that we get to an answer, and so I'm open to any number of points of feedback that you may have, suggestions. Let's just open it up and have some general discussion maybe first.
Well, there's certainly all strong candidates, I think. I have eliminated one for sure. There's three other ones that I'm just thinking about, so.
Are you open to sharing who you may have eliminated?
After reading through everything, the Baker Tilly candidate was the one that I personally would not, so.
I had some concerns in that direction as well. Was Baker Tilly the top on anyone's list? I'm seeing heads shake, so should we move to the other three? Anybody, any other, like, just open up just general points of feedback?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, all four of them have a very similar process. I mean, I think the three that we're considering all will do an excellent job, in my opinion. I've had the pleasure of working with Carl on, you know, a couple of boards. You know, he's been very involved in the local chamber. He's my point of contact with the Community Scholarship Foundation. I mean, does a great job of communication in both of those realms. And so, I mean, specialized recruiting group would be my top vote, especially the local investment that they've made is, you know, far none, or compared to anybody else's, second to none.
Other points, chats?
I would tend to echo that. My concern with that, the local firm, is just like the experience of how many administrators they've actually, city administrators that actually placed. A little concerned on that, but that could be good, too.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I think I agree. And then one thing that stood out was their answer to your questions, Mara, because it seemed like GovHR had the most experience, I think, with involving community. I think second was DDA. And then, since we, it seems like have eliminated Baker Tilly, I won't mention them, but then Express Employment, they seemed like they were open to it, but they just, it seemed like they didn't have that experience behind it. So if that seems like a strong path we want to take, I think DDA or GovHR would be more beneficial for that path. But I don't think it's necessarily a make or break.
Yeah.
I love the local nod and the strong kind of local presence and community leadership that Express Employment has, and Carl in particular. My concern is, is I just, like, before I started looking at proposals, I wrote down two things that I was looking for, and one was contacts and credibility. So I think, you know, the process is going, it's a public process. It's going to capture just naturally attention because it exists. I'm looking for that individual that has the broadest network of contacts, but then also the person that's got the credibility to, this is, I've made the analogy many times, and I think it still works. This is like the NFL picking a coach. There's lots of NFL teams out there looking for coaches. There's lots of cities that are looking. And so I think I'm looking for somebody who's maybe able to have that personal network that is able to reach out to even candidates who may not be actively looking to, you know, give us the best list of candidates. And so that's my hesitancy on Carl and his firm is that I'm concerned about that lack of network. Along those lines, I also think about, there's a process, but then there's also the right person for the city and where we are at this point in time. And so I kind of give the nod of preference to DDA, just because they just assisted us with the staffing study. I think they've seen internally, just, you know, with a great amount of detail, they did that staffing study before we knew we were doing this search. And so it was really independent work on looking at who we are as an organization and what our current needs are. I think they've had that benefit of having a little bit of a leg up to, so that coupled with their network, I've got them at the top of my list. That said, GovHR also has a really, you know, just the connections, you know, me talking about connections and wanting those connections. The link to the league and then also their association board is also really powerful. So those two would be my, I think, my tops at this point, but probably the lead towards DDA, just again, having the experience with us, and they certainly have some familiarity with our organization.
Me personally, I've kind of boiled it down to DDA or GovHR for several different reasons. To me, they were both very, very well organized, at least through the presentation, and when you read through their brochure or whatever. So I'm getting closer. Well, those would be my, also my two choices.
GovHR certainly was, you know, had a nice presentation. Just don't, I'm not in love with the fact that they're not local at all.
Fair.
At least DDA is, you know, Minnesota-born, grown.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess be DDA or SRG for me, but, you know, I think that local connection. And I kind of wondered, is, you know, knowing Carl a little bit and hearing his reaction, I wonder if that interview question, if he understood it was kind of on that interview day that everybody talked about, or if it was later.
Fair.
You know, I mean, having that local network of people just to reach into his database could be of value.
Yeah, agree. Agree. One thing that was, one thing that shocked me when we went through this five years ago or six years ago for the last, we didn't, we wanted a broad network, but one of the things that shocked me is just how broad the applicant pool was.
Oh, it's amazing.
We didn't, we were open to a national search. It wasn't intentionally a national search, but it just naturally became a national search. And so I suspect that process is going to open us up. And so certainly the local understanding of what's going to work for Forest Lake is important, but also just the depth of experience and, you know, number of city administrators and that, I want that experience. We had the benefit of, I'm going to blank, was it Jim Miller? Was that our recruiter last time? I'm probably blank on his last name, and I apologize. He did such a fantastic job, but he had been in that role for, he'd recruited for 30, 40 years and just literally knew everybody. So unfortunately, he is now retired-retired and not able to be available, but it was, we benefited so much from that just depth of knowledge that really, again, has me leaning towards either DDA or GovHR. And I agree with you, Councilmember Erickson, that the local connection with DDA is maybe a tipping point. Any additional points of feedback or thoughts?
Amanda, would you agree that it would be helpful? I mean, I tend to agree, helpful, that since we do have some history with DDA, that that would be an advantage? Or is it a disadvantage? Maybe too much behind-the-scenes type stuff? Or, I don't know, just interesting your thoughts on that, if you have any.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, Councilmember Roberts. Yeah, I think it, they certainly have developed relationships with some of the staff, and so they would have some understanding around perhaps what staff feels like they really need to move forward to sort of turn to the next page of the development for the city. That said, that can cut both ways, right? Because there is loyalty to the staff in that regard, and so there's already some maybe preconceived ideas around what the city needs. But that could be accurate or inaccurate. I feel like I was really cagey in my answer. That's.
I think you're muddying the water.
I think maybe what I've heard from counsel is, yes, there is a benefit to getting this national search, for sure, because you have a larger pool of candidates. Also, Forest Lake is a small town in, you know, where we're located, and that's something that I think that we take pride in. And there is a strong feeling of we would prefer to hire locally, as locally as possible. DDA is a more local search. Both Baker Tilly, which I realize they're out, but both Baker Tilly and GovHR, they don't have sort of the narrow-scoped search focus that DDA does. So not to say that they aren't going to pull outside, but certainly when I was speaking with the references, DDA tended to focus more locally, certainly state-focused within the state of Minnesota versus out of the state. My personal opinion is that there is a pretty significant learning curve for a candidate who has not been practicing as a city administrator within the state of Minnesota. We have unique statutes. We have unique rules. We have open meeting laws, all these kinds of things that are really going to affect a city administrator's day-to-day. And I was struck how many times with the previous city administrator, you know, I heard, well, we didn't do that in Wisconsin. We didn't do that in Illinois, and that wasn't a rule we had. Well, I get that, but that's a rule here, and so we do have to follow those. So selfishly, I like the idea of a local candidate because they wouldn't have that learning curve. And so then maybe choosing a firm that can target more locally.
Well, we can test the water, right? So I'd make a motion that we hire GovHR. I'm assuming it's dying for the lack of a second?
I don't know if I'm, yeah. Is there a second? From purposes of moving the conversation forward, I would move that counsel approve DDA. Is there a second?
I'll second for conversation.
That's how we get it rolling. That's how we get it rolling.
So GovHR, so tell me, talk to me about GovHR.
I think the presentation was really good. It was well-organized, and I think they really know what they're doing. Part of it was just, honestly, none of us know any of these groups very well, you know? And I think they're all very professional, and I just wanted to find out where we are with them. That's basically what it wants to. If it died for the lack of a second, it died. And so we can move on with something else, or we can move on with discussion, simple as that.
Could you support DDA, or would you feel that was a mistake?
I could, yes. And as I said before, they were kind of the two that I had settled in on. That's just me, one vote. And so I thought, well, I'll start out and rattle the cage, rattle the cage.
So if I, as far as the person that would conduct it, I mean, Bart, you just, you know, to Councilman Husnick's point, we don't really know these groups or anything. But we, in my experience with him and having the interview process when we went through the study, I felt real comfortable. He seemed real knowledgeable about, you know, what he does, and obviously, he's been a city administrator. So I think that would, I'd kind of tip the cap towards him. I do, you know, if Carl's firm had a little bit more experience on placing these, I would be, that would be my first choice, just based on the local and everything that he does for this community and how involved his company is. But just with the experience, I think I would have to go with DDA as a first choice.
Yeah, because I had actually mentioned, I had talked about Carl in private conversation, too, because of the local aspect. I did.
Yeah.
And, but I'm trying to get a consensus.
Yeah, fair.
That's what it wants to. And so I have nothing against any one of these folks. And at the end, when we do hire one, the rest of them have to understand that we can only pick one of them out of a group of really well-qualified people, so.
Other, open, other points of discussion? So there's a motion on the table for DDA. There's a second for DDA. Other points of discussion?
Point of clarification, so you haven't made a motion for GovHR, but did that get withdrawn with your motion for E?
No, no, it didn't get withdrawn. It just died because it wasn't a second. Lack of a second.
Yep.
I agree with the points that Councilmember Roberts made. And, you know, I'm excited that we have somebody in our backyard that has this expertise and that interest, and this is a, you know, recruiting for government roles is a little bit of a unique animal, and it's a public beast. And so I, you know, us to, us to consider them on future searches for other positions would maybe be a good starting spot. We do have a history on needing to fill some roles, and so maybe to develop that relationship further with some positions that are not that city administrator or that, you know, NFL head coach position that we need in this particular case might be a good next step specific to them. But I think just experience level, depth of understanding, DDA has my support. Any other points of feedback?
No, I mean, I appreciate everybody, you know, making the, taking the time for making the proposal, and, you know, based on points that have been shared, I could support that as well.
Very good. With that, let's call the vote. All of those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right.
But Amanda, you're going to be talking to the rest of these folks at all, or?
Yeah, just quick, can we, please, Your Honor, counsel. So I will let DDA know, I will let the other firms know that this sounds like it was a really difficult choice. If we get candidates as good as the search firms, we're in good hands in general.
That is right.
They need to know how much we appreciate.
Yes. I will absolutely make it clear that they're, yeah. I will do that. The next step then is I will let DDA to start. When we looked at their proposal, they were going to be coming, I believe at the, like, it would be the next meeting, sorry, the March 11th meeting, where you would be approving various aspects of that. Are we good with that sort of a timeline? Essentially, are we good with continuing to keep pressure on this in terms of moving forward with the search, right?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any possibility we could expedite that conversation to be February 26?
Well, that's kind of what I'm wondering, is if we, do we want them to come back to the next meeting to just sort of the kickoff?
I will be out of town that day.
Oh, you are out of town the 26th? Okay. Well, I am, I am out the first meeting in March. However, I can, I can connect prior to that meeting. Obviously, I can't participate in the full discussion with counsel, but I can get some points of input in before that meeting, just, we're going to be without one of us at either meeting, so.
Mara, would it be better if we just had a workshop meeting rather than a?
Do we need to take action?
Your Honor, no, I don't, not that would require, it could be all done through, because you've already tasked them with doing the search. And so now this is sort of the detail. But it is not something that I would argue is necessary for a regular.
I'm just trying to think where everybody could be there.
Yeah. You could definitely have a set of work session if you wanted to.
The challenge with that is that is only next work session, which is one week away, which might be a bit expedited. I think the, if I understand the process, the point of input, yes, it's helpful to have some, have discussion here at council to get consensus. And whatever, if it's the end of February meeting, or that first meeting in March, whoever's not at that meeting can have an opportunity to weigh in as well, and then have that information kind of brought back to council.
Well, and so looking at their timeline, on February 23rd, that's a Friday, they have information gathering. I believe that's where they would want to set up one-on-ones with every single one of you, and then staff that you would designate, and any other stakeholders that you may designate. I will work with you via email to kind of try to figure that out. And I'll start with the mayor and council, and we'll, yeah, we'll figure that out. But so the plan is that your first point of contact with DDA would be on that Friday of the February 23rd. Is that a date that generally works for people to carve out about an hour of their I can make that work.
Same.
Yeah?
Would be fun.
Okay. Okay. So then on the 11th, you'll be approving the actual position profile.
Perfect.
Which, are we okay doing that with Councilmember Erickson not being there?
I will be on the 11th, it'll be me that's not here. But I'm okay, I'm okay, yes.
You're okay, okay. Okay. Then I think I have all the information I need from you to move forward. You will continue to get additional correspondence from me on this as we step into the, you know, next phase.
Very good. We have one final item on our action agenda this evening, and that is the appointment of board and commissions. As everyone knows, we are going through a bit of a different process this go around, in that we are conducting interviews with all of the candidates between the city council liaison and the individual board chair. And so those meetings are ongoing. We have, I believe, an appointment to be made for the planning commission that will be coming forward at our next meeting. Councilmember Husnick and I are considering a couple of candidates on the EDA, and hope to have that brought to a conclusion as well. But in the meantime, we didn't want to hold up appointments for positions that are for renewing members. And so before you, you have recommendations of appointment for the airport commission, returning members, Don Steeler and Mark Lynch. And then for the planning commission, returning members, Don Steeler and Susan Young. And I would be, so I would be looking for both. It's my memo, so I'm not going to make a motion to approve my own memo. I will look for a motion and a second, or any feedback council may have.
I'll make a move to reappoint the noted commissioners.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right, we are going to, that concludes the end of our regular agenda this evening. We are going to move into a workshop session on a couple of topics. Just a note for anyone watching, that this is a more informal working session of council. Anything we discuss tonight that needs official action will come back before council in a future meeting. This is intended to be a work, a working session, as stated. So with that, we're going to move into a discussion on the DDA staffing study. And Christina, I think you're kicking us off.
Mayor and council, I'll just give a brief background, and then Bart will step up to present his final report. But as I'd mentioned, DDA started this work last fall. The, a copy of the report is in your packet. Really, some of the feedback that we're looking from, looking for from you tonight is, you know, what questions you have about the report, what recommendations of his. There's quite a long list in there. Do you want to begin implementing? What are some of those next steps? I've listed the recommendations in the cover memo as well, just to kind of pull them out of the report. Obviously, some of them will have fiscal impact, some of them will not. So we'll determine that when you provide that direction. I'm just going to put a plug in for filling some vacant, another vacant position in the administration department, I hope will rise to the top of your list. I do want to point out too, that since I started four weeks ago, or whatever it was, I looked at Bart's report and just some of what I know about the industry and the titles, I asked him to consider the administrative services director role instead of the assistant tour management analyst. And he'll get into some of those details. But my last city, we had a lot of the HR type issues that I saw in this report, and really recognizing that you might not need an HR director, but somebody that has a really strong HR focus and skillset, but could also maybe be a department head of the administration department. So I just wanted to call that out, since that was a little change that I'd asked for in my observations here in the few short weeks. And I will turn it over to Bart.
Welcome. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I know it's less formal, but it's a habit of mine. Thank you again for the opportunity. Actually, thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this organizational study. Back in November, I believe it was, you hired us to come out and do this organizational study in regards to, really, the purpose of it was to help you, as the city of Forest Lake, determine the most appropriate staffing structure and process efficiencies for providing city services. And we really focused in on more of the administration department, the community development department, and the finance department. The process, how we got here and got to the report, the study consisted of an evaluation of workflow, staffing needs, an assessment of organizational structure and culture, with a focus on relationships within. We did this through interviews with all of you. I had, you know, I had phone calls or virtual meetings with all of you. Also, I had sit down meetings with several administration, finance, and community development staff, as well as other department heads, such as the police chief and the fire chief. We also did a review of some of your job descriptions, current positions and practices, and just other relevant information, any kind of information we could get our hands on to go through and just help with this. The goal ultimately was to develop recommendations and to assure, assuring efficient customer and employee oriented service, and an organization with a positive culture. And so upon conclusion of that, of the process, I did provide this report with observations and recommendations. Those were discussed, just candidly, they were discussed with the previous city administrator. And then when Christina came in, also discussed those with her as well. And as she mentioned, just made a few tweaks. I would say there was not, no wholesale changes, but there were a few tweaks as we went through the process. Just because, again, I'm coming into the, to the organization, I'll say green. I don't know all the internal workings. And so it's helpful to have people that know the organization also review the report and understand it as well, and provide that I'll maybe stop here, not maybe, I will stop here and just ask this question. I want to be very cognizant of your time this evening. I am more than willing to walk through all of my recommendations and enhance on those a little bit, but I also want to be very cognizant of your time. So you've had a copy of the report. And so what would be your expectation? Would you like me to walk through it? Christina did a really good job of laying those out in the memo as well. And I can expand upon those. Or would you like me to just stand for questions? What are your thoughts on that?
Counsel, I'm open to feedback. My, my initial inclination is that we've had the report for some time, and have had some opportunity to review through it. Christina summarized the points. I guess I would encourage us to jump into more of the discussion portion, or kind of what's outside of the report, to the extent that we have any open questions. I think, as I just try to wrap my head around implementation of the recommendations, where would you start?
Sure.
What's our next best move?
Next best move. I think Christina hit on a couple of them pretty well. And from my perspective, it's filling some of the positions, these open positions that are out there. Quite frankly, the human resources position is on top, in my mind, for a reason. I didn't number these, you know, I didn't necessarily put them in any particular order. However, I think human resources, a human resources position is extremely important. Christina already addressed the, in talking with her, I really do understand where she's coming from in regards to administrative services director position, or administrative services, because you'll see even in the report, the number of duties that fall under that position, because it don't necessarily specifically fit in, you know, fire, or, you know, public works, there's a lot there. And so I really, after talking with Christina, it made a lot of sense to me to really change that to administrative services director, or that's the recommendation anyway. It's all up to you how you want to decide, or how you want to move forward, of course. So. And then you already addressed the clerk position earlier today, so, earlier this evening. So to me, from my perspective, it really is filling those positions and getting back up to your staffing levels.
Is the H, and maybe the two of you have a difference of opinion, so that's fine and lovely to have a difference of opinion. Is the administrative services director also, are they the HR person, and we hire with that lean? Or are they two separate positions? And again, I'm open to a difference of opinion.
Mayor and council, so in my proposal, the administrative services director, I would estimate about 75% of their time is HR devoted. They would oversee the clerk, right, because they're the top of the admin department head type position, communications. There'll be some general contracts as I get my hands around them. Probably not an airport manager, though. That's maybe not a good fit with that skillset. As Bart mentioned, there was kind of just, like, it seemed like when you didn't know where to put something, you just threw it in that assistant role before. And I think you'll be much better served if you can kind of group the right skillsets together. So my proposal would be to hire this, this higher level department head position this year. But I know we have a lot of talking to do about long range staffing plans as well. And I just haven't had enough time. But I think, you know, usually, it's maybe an HR technician then to help with some of that HR stuff, or a communication specialist, if that's a priority for the council. Or if I continue to unearth all these agreements and leases that I come across, maybe it's a management analyst that can be more general. And, you know, maybe one of each of those positions over the next three years. But my proposal would be that for the immediate future, that at least another year, this position would be act almost as your HR director, but again, with some of those other duties in there.
And I don't mean to pit the two of you against each other. I have this interest in two different perspectives, if we have them.
Yes, yes. No, this is great. Actually, and just to enhance that, and maybe just step up one more level here, I had this in the report too. I think something that's been done very well, as my understanding is there's a 10-year financial plan that the city has put together. As part of that, a very strong recommendation of mine would be to put together a 10-year position plan, or hiring plan for positions. And I think that's what Christina's essentially getting to here, is, you know, it's continue to evaluate. I mean, it doesn't have to be static. It's obviously going to be very fluid. But how do you, you know, what positions do you hire when to, for the most effectiveness and efficiency of the organization? So that's kind of a higher level view. I actually would defer to Christina on this. I guess, from my perspective, I think yes. I think what she's saying is exactly right. I think you need an assistant, or, sorry, I'm going to call him assistant administrator, administrative services director who has significant HR experience. But I also think that there is going to be the need for, like she said, an HR technical person, someone who can do kind of the day-to-day stuff. There's so many things that are coming down the pipe right now in the HR world for organizations. And Forest Lake's at that, in my, in my opinion, Forest Lake is at that level where they're going to need. Take this the right way, please. A lot of HR help, but that's, organizations such as yours need all that HR help, so.
Counsel, other questions we might have, or?
Yeah, there's going to be lots of discussion along the way. And I appreciate, you know, your perspective on all this stuff. And as we go, hiring and everything else, there's going to be plenty of discussion going on about all this. So if we can look at the recommendations, and as we have been for quite some time, and a lot of them are dead on, you know? But as we hire people, there's going to be some things changing there too, so. Anyways, Bart, thanks for, my perspective, from my perspective, thanks for your time and your interview and all that.
Yeah, I echo Councilmember Husnick's comments on just, thank you for the thoroughness of the process and the documentation. And this is what we needed at this point. So appreciate that. Any other points of, either questions or discussion, things that aren't clear?
Aside from the city clerk position, is there anything else we're doing with this until we get the city administrator role filled?
I mean, from, I think that's an open question for us. As I hear that question, I'd like to see us move sooner rather than later on either administrative services director or some, whatever that position is. That city administrator position's not going to be filled till the summer. Somebody on board, you start the process. We don't have that position filled until probably end of third quarter at the earliest. I think, I don't think it can wait. And I, I'm not sure there's a reason why it should wait, unless somebody else had a different perspective on why we shouldn't start that sooner rather than later. Yeah. It seems like there's budget for it, and certainly clearly need. I think whoever comes in as that next city administrator is going to be served, well served by having somebody in the seat for some time.
I think we need to fill that vacuum. That's just my opinion, but we've been floundering a little bit.
Do you agree? Based on your question, did you think that we would wait, or?
No. Me, it's just back and forth on what is that role, I think, is where kind of my question is. So is it, is it that administrative director with a strong HR background? Is that what we're?
The direction we need from you.
Christina, go ahead.
Mayor and council, that's the direction we need from you. And I will just add to, whether you call it assistant city administrator, administrative services director, that position will probably be more challenging to recruit for than a city clerk, for example. And so it might be good to even just get that started. And they may or may not be selected by the time you have your administrator selected. But because you want to be really cognizant of finding the person with that right skillset, it may take a little longer than some of your other positions. When I, when I did this a year ago, it took, I'm trying to remember, I think it took like nine months, went through in the process twice, because again, we held to that standard of making sure you find the person that has the right skillset, not just hiring a warm body. So assuming we would do that as well, to any concern that you might have, it's, it may not be that the position is filled before the administrator. But I think getting that ball rolling will definitely be a help to your next administrator.
So this position, as is being described, with a strong HR background, are we, are we filling that new position that we budgeted for around HR? Or are we backfilling Dan's position and just narrowing it to, I mean, because there's really two open positions in a sense.
Correct. There's two, there's two positions funded.
Right.
Yeah.
How does?
Under, under, under my proposal, you would only fill one more position. You wouldn't fill both the HR one and Dan's position. It would be this new, and it's kind of a hybrid position, at least for the rest of this year. And then again, that longer term staffing study that we talked about, maybe there'd be something more in '25, '26, '27.
Three hats. That's what it was in my style.
The other reason that I'm suggesting only filling these two this year is you already have a thin staff, and you want to make sure you're onboarding people correctly too, right? Or else you've just invested in all that recruitment that, that maybe doesn't work out if a person doesn't have the right experience initially, to be successful, and to be set up successful when they come here. So I think from that perspective too is another reason. And from a budgetary perspective, Kevin has assured me that, you know, just doing this one higher level position is, is going to be, is not going to be any more than those two other positions separately, so.
So on this position, is there opportunities, this question could be for both, or anyone, if a need for an interim type, are there people out there that maybe are retired that maybe want a short-term thing? If we really are, which I agree, we are, we need this badly, is nine Which I agree, we are, we need this badly, is nine, I mean, that seems like a long time to continue the way we have here with, you know, overtaxing staff and that, so I, I don't know if that's an option or not, if there's even people out there that would be willing to do that.
And I would have to probably refer to somebody like Bart and your, those, those recruitment firms maybe have some temp leads, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't know for sure.
Right. I, council member, I think the answer to that question is, I, I think there could be people out there that would be willing to do it on an interim basis. I know the League of Minnesota Cities has keeps and compiles a list of people that are willing to do interim work, it's more on the city administrator, city manager side of things, but I also think that there could be a possibility of folks that would be willing to do the assistant or administrative services director work also, so. I, I think there's a possibility, I, I just, I can't guarantee that.
In that, then I would, you know, if, if the council was open, I would defer to Christina and staff to, if we actually need that, or if they think they can kind of keep things going for the next six to nine months, you know, I'm.
And I wanted to be pessimistic and give you a long time, I hope that it's not that long, but.
But you got to start someplace.
I think, I think the next, I think the next step is to, so I appreciated the depth of the, what was brought forward to us for the city clerk position, I think the next step is to put together that same description for the administrative services director, that title does not yet roll off my tongue, I need to look at it every time I say it, but to put that together and then bring that back to council, and I agree with you, council member Roberts, that if this is indeed, if we're buckled in for a long haul, we might look for some sort of either an interim, or there are components of that that can be contracted out, I would have to believe, so us to think about filling that role in a different way if we think we're in for a long recruitment cycle. Because I agree that permanent hire needs to be the right person, we also need to onboard appropriately and, you know, and so that, if there's a way for us to fill the gap with some contract resources or an interim resource, I think we'd be open to it. But I think step one is putting it together and getting it in front of us, so we're all comfortable with scope of work, scope of duties, and that we've kind of found the right, we're kind of melding a number of positions together, and so finding the right balance. I think getting before, that in front of us is a good next step. Agree? Any other questions on study in general, this particular position that we are talking about, anything else? All right, well, thank you for being here tonight, and look forward with, working with you in this next phase, appreciate it.
All right, yes, and thank you very much for that opportunity as well.
Yeah.
City attorney informed me in the back of the room, so thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, moving into our discussion topics this evening, legislative bonding priorities, and Christina?
Yeah, mayor and council, so today the legislative session kicked off down in St. Paul, and so we want to have a discussion about bonding topics, and not only for this year, but also for future years. We, we have worked with, for this year, the county's lobbyist is working with Representative Anderson and putting together a bonding bill for, to help us with the local cost share of four million dollars for CASA thirty-two and the Forest Road realignment. But one of the reasons I want to, and if there's other things that you want us to work on this year, we certainly want to hear that tonight, although, you know, time is always short, but you never know what we might be able to accomplish. But the other reason I wanted to have a, a longer-term discussion as well is, in the odd-numbered years, communities can submit requests to the management, the management budget office at the state, and that's typically how you get on the tours that come around to, around the state, so it requires that little extra work to do, and so I put a little bit about that process in there. Otherwise, staff just kind of brainstormed some ideas, but again, we're open to anything that you might have either for this year or next year, and mainly, we just looked at the CIP, so Elm Crest, Elm Crest improvements, this is the road where we share some borders with Hugo, Lionel Lakes, Columbus, and Forest Lake, I think, so it could be a really good collaborative, regionally significant project, which usually fare much better at the legislature as well. North Shore Trail and North Shore Drive, street and utility improvements, I've heard about a lot here, Fenway Avenue improvements, the Twelfth Street improvements, maybe certain aspects of the downtown plan, such as the boat, boat launch relocation or shoreline stabilization, will also be, the other thing on the list is the public works facility, or maybe what happens to that public works facility afterwards, I've heard that might be a community park. And then other park improvements, lighting at Fenway, for example, to enhance the ability to have tournaments out there. Those were some of the things that we came up with, but just looking for feedback and direction from council tonight, if there's anything else we should pursue this year, and anything then that we could kind of put at least on the list to start thinking about for next year, and, and knowing what's going to rise up to the top so that we can be ready for that MMV process.
I think you, I think you named a couple that I was thinking about, especially the Forest Boulevard, Love, Dano intersection, that needs to be done.
So I, Christina, I appreciate your perspective and getting us better plugged into this process. I, we've been fortunate in our receipt, our, being a recipient of these proceeds, however, I'm not sure that we have followed all of the process of the application and have gotten, we've, we've kind of been a tag on to some, as a courtesy to some of the bonding tours. I know in particular, we, we've, we've been invited to present at the, to the capital investment committee, and then we were also invited to, I believe Cottage Grove had included us as part of a, a presentation a couple of years ago, and we were recently included in the tour in Scandia, but it was always kind of the tag on, and so it's good to know the process to get us as the actual stop, which is an even more powerful position. And so I, and recognize that that is, you know, requires a little bit more forethought and planning than what we have done, so this is our opportunity to just get better, so I appreciate you bringing that. I think for what's on the table this year, from my perspective, clearly Forest Road is the, the headliner, I think, and I'm not, I'm maybe a little concerned on some of these others and their readiness to be on a list, but if I'm missing, if, if staff feels that we're in a spot where we should be making a broader proposal for some of these items for this year, I'm open to hearing it. I, I'm just not sure, I'm not sure it's there yet, to me, these other items feel like they would be on for a future list where we can have more time in development and just making sure that they're the right asks at the right time. Also, we'll say, though, as we've been through this process and as we've learned, it is helpful to have topics of, of different types of, different types of projects on the list that kind of check different boxes, if you will, because sometimes it's, it's not so much what's happening in Forest Lake, but it's also what's happening in other communities, and if everyone else is asking for road projects, that might be great for us to do a water project or vice versa. So we have benefited from having a portfolio of options, just because you never know what is going to be viewed favorably at the time, so that's maybe my perspective. Other thoughts as you, council members, as you look at this list?
Yeah, I mean, neither of these are, are, are good projects, I agree that readiness may be an issue. When do we need to have this list ready to submit?
Well, if there's anything more in 2024, we really need it tonight, but any of the other stuff for 2025, you know, and, and this is maybe a more exhaustive list either, I don't know that staff is necessarily saying, these are great ones, we're just trying to brainstorm, so at the end of the day, it might be more helpful for you to prioritize these projects. But it's not due until, I think, June of 2025, so you have, you know, a whole year where you can keep talking about this, I just want to start that conversation so that it doesn't get lost, and things could change between now and, and this time next year, but, you know, are we headed on the right path, maybe we have too many road projects in here, are there park projects that we're missing, or economic development projects we're missing? You know, the, it's good to have a, a variety, but I also think the more focused that we can be and really target our message on, on what is our top priorities would be helpful as well, so.
Maybe we could get this back on a workshop, you know, for like April or May, I like the idea of getting it done ahead of time.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, having to.
It can be part of the budget discussion as well, I mean, I'm not even sure it needs to come back this year that early, but I just wanted to start that conversation, so.
So, I do have just a little bit of concern on the Forest Road, I, as much as I agree that, that the last plan that came forward and makes the most sense, and it's the right time to do it, I, I, I'm challenged with going forward without some hard numbers on property and intimate domain and that, I, I don't want to take anyone's land on this, and it sounds as though that we have some interested parties here, but I want to make sure that's the case before moving too much forward, that would be my preference.
Ryan, Dave, how do you want to, how do we approach those concerns, or what's the, I guess maybe, also kind of embedded in maybe your question, if I can expand that a little bit further, is, is there risk in putting this on a list that is going to go to the, you know, you know, go to the, of our legislative priorities, is there some risk of us putting that on the, on the list if we have some components of the project that are still unknown? Thoughts?
Well, Washington County is moving forward with the anticipation that we were in favor of the realignment of Forest Road based off our last discussion and meetings that we've had, with council member and the mayor and Brian Mirren and other city staff in there that gave that direction, and then they circled back with the, the three property owners that would be within this agreement. The two that live in houses are for the project and want their properties to be taken, or whatever, you know, after the deal's done. What's done with the land, you know, I don't know at this time, but the, the one property owner that was in favor of it then backed out and didn't want to move forward with it, does not have any structures on the house. It's three, three vacant parcels, there would probably be some lot combinations after the, everything was done, and at the end of the day, I think it actually benefits that person that you would be taking that property, because now they're going to have improved public roadway in front of their property that they could develop in the future if they wanted to. There's sewer right there, there's water, obviously, in the area, too, so. I thought kind of we were all on the same page, to the point that the county's already been preparing some legislation stuff, have they worked with lobbyists? That's the whole point, we just had the public open house, too. So all those three property owners were, again, contacted and informed of that group's decision to move forward, and then gave them adequate time to digest anything or any information that we shared with them prior to going to the public open house.
So, oh, go ahead, Christina.
Sorry, mayor, to your question, though, if I understood it correctly, it was, are we jeopardizing anything moving forward with this in, from a bonding proposal? And I don't think we are, even if we got everything, I don't think the state would be mad if it turned out to be something less at the end of the day, right? And so there might still be some of the details to work through, but I'm not sure that I would want, I would encourage you to pull back on that bonding proposal.
Those large co-op agreement projects that are doing expanded footprints and need property right away, that is a common theme in all those projects that are going through the bonding bill requests, because it's something bigger, newer, safety improvements require more width, more space, stormwater treatment needs to be in there, that's more space, width taken, so that's nothing that would be new to any of the projects that they see coming through for bonding bill requests.
Yeah, and this is going to be a great project, that.
There are so many partners in this one, the school districts, the stories, the agencies, the collaboration.
So every project that we consider, almost every project we, we consider, Ryan, maybe this is what you were saying, always has some level of land acquisition as part of that project plan, and there's a number of ways that gets accomplished, right? And it's always a little bit of a variable on what that's going to take. So from your perspective, are there, are there land acquisition red flags that are big enough that would say, eh, we should need to tap the brakes a little bit, or is it more of, this is the process we're in, and we need that process to continue to play out while we are also going after funding? Do you stop, I guess maybe more directly, do, do we stop the funding so that those red land acquisition flags can be cleared, or do we continue?
I would continue to pursue funding, because if you're not successful the first time, and you've still got another opportunity, or maybe even a third by the time you get to that construction year.
Yeah. Council, how do you feel about that?
Just to be clear, I, I'm for the project, I just, you know, not knowing much about it until the workshop or the open house, and learning that maybe one property owner wasn't really favorable, that just causes concern for me, that's all, so, just as, you know, as long as we can work.
That project guys.
And, and to your, to your concern, the project's not done till it's done, and we have, you know, it's part of why we have the ability for, you know, local design, and we, you know, we get to make those approvals, so I don't mean to shut down those concerns because I hear them and understand, I, but I, I don't want us to, my, my concern on this project is funding it, and so, and our window for funding narrows pretty quickly here if we don't act quickly, so I don't want us to lose that, because we, we can't reverse the clock on that.
So, you know, past decisions, I'm a big property rights person, so that's, that just needs to be clear.
Understood.
And to work for that, so that we can be a partner with that instead of having any issues, so.
I understand. So, and this one sounds like we've got a, a green light to continue pursuing bonding requests. I, I think, I think we need to do some specific council conversation on the other priorities and let that list evolve, I appreciate having it out there, and this needs to just become part of what we're doing, just like the ten-year plan, we're just always updating the list. We know that many cities are on that list for three, five, seven, many years, and they, they aren't always asking the, they aren't always making the ask every year, but they certainly have, you know, there's a long development cycle, so I think, I think this is a start to that, and we can refine as we go. I would say, I think, specific to the downtown item, I think we are undershooting what could be a larger, maybe more attractive project, also that runs the risk of it becomes too large, but the start, and we've got a placeholder, so.
I, you know, just from feedback from residents, I think North Shore has to be the hot, the priority on that, on, you know, after, after Forest Road, just, just, if, remember, people effects where some of our development's going to go, it's a county road that we took over, that was a mess at the time, and has continued to be since, so I think that has to be a priority.
Fair. Ryan, go ahead.
Are you talking North Shore Drive or North Shore Trail?
Well, all of it. I, I think, you know, in just talking, you know, with you and plan with, you know, the, the dry, the trail part, because it's a longer stretch, and then, you know, I think out of that, it seems as though that drive is, is in much better shape than the trail part of the old township part, even though the infrastructure needs to be fit, you know, sewer, water, everything needs to be done underneath North Shore Drive.
So here's just an easy example, if I'm viewing applications, right, if you submitted drive, I'm probably going to see a lot more things that are going to score better than just trail.
Perfect.
Because drive, we know you have lead services in there, you got no stormwater treatment because it was built prior to any rules, you got it, you can even probably tweak it in the application, this is a cut-through because it's connected to Greenway and sixty-one, right? Now, if you get me out in the North Shore Trail, like, you got no water out there, rural ditches, you got some stormwaters, you know, areas that are probably doing their own treatment, it's kind of more just a lineal, let's give me some money for payments, so that's going to be a difficult score, right? So I think it's also important that maybe we just get some of the older bonding bill awards, so you guys are familiar with some of those projects, because I have seen public works stuff in there, and I think the boat launch relocation is a story, if you mirror it with something else, too, but it's going to have to have more than just one, it's rough road, right? Just to be honest, you know, that's, that's, they're going to look at how many applications, and do they really read all of them? Can't say yes, a hundred percent on that, but what pops out in those, you know, can you, can you, all of a sudden, this thing has ten things that you know they're going to be attracted to, and this one had one, you know, so that's, you got to think about that, so. Since Eureka, we were able to land in a lot of different things in that one.
This is why we have you, right?
Yes.
But either regardless of whether we get state funding or not, the road needs to be addressed, and that's cast, if that comes on us, I guess that's what we have to do.
Yeah, I agree. I, also to that end, note that Representative Anderson has an open house tomorrow at 5:30 at, I believe, the Legion, at the Legion, social 5:30, presentation at 6:00. So, good opportunity to connect with her and hear what else is happening. I don't mean to take us too far off track. Any other points of feedback related to this initial discussion and what will be one of several as we kind of proceed here? Christina, do you have what you need for kind of immediate next steps?
Yes, I'm here, and we just focus on Forest Road and CASA 32 this year, and we'll continue to have these discussions on others.
Yeah. All right. That moves us to the end of our planned working sessions, working session topics this evening. We are going to do staff and council updates and then move into a closed session. Let's start staff updates with Abby.
Thank you, Mayor Bain, members of the council. Last Friday, myself and building official Cory Murphy met with the owners of the soon-to-be Zuko Maya. It'll be the new Latin fusion restaurant that'll be located in the old Fireside Building. For council members that aren't aware, they purchased the Fireside Building, they'll convert all, the entire building will be a restaurant, so there won't be that ground-level kind of service retail that there was before. They also did acquire the old theater property as part of the transaction. They were under the impression that the building was condemned by the city and had to be torn down. We did talk with them about the fact that the city with Capital C and the community is very concerned about the condition of the building, that we want to see something happen there, but they do have options in terms of demolition, rehabilitation, and that there are potential funding sources and that city staff can assist with those funding sources, be that local funding sources, county, state, but that having a good solid plan in place before we start things like potential demolition, to see if we can't capitalize on some of those public assistance dollars. So, as those plans kind of unfold, I'll keep you all posted, but I have also put them in touch with their adjacent property owners and other folks in the development field that they might be able to partner with on some sort of future redevelopment there. So, hopefully something will be coming forth, but I did let them know that they're not in any major rush. There are no orders for the building to come down, and they should really focus on their restaurant, and I welcome them to Forest Lake.
Fabulous. Thank you, Abby. Christina?
Just a reminder that Monday is President's Day, so city offices will be closed and your work session is moved to Tuesday next week.
Thank you for that reminder. Amanda?
Yes, council, mayor, the Lakeview Farms, Forest Hills Farms litigation is done. All of the parties have received what they needed to get in the litigation. We're just waiting for the judge to dismiss the case.
Fabulous. Nice update. Thank you. Dave?
Public Works is conducting interviews this week for our retiree from last, last fall, so we're doing interviews this week, and hopefully on the 26th agenda will come for approval for a new hire. So, we had 65 applicants come in, so that was a pretty good, pretty good amount that came in.
Fantastic. Good. Thank you, Dave. Ryan?
Mayor, city council, I got one update for you, water efficiency grants. We got this quarter and next quarter left, so that program ends June 30th. Actually been pretty successful in getting a lot of rebate here the last six months. We've been pretty steady, but we got two months or two quarters here to go, and we still got ample grant funds, so let's don't leave that on the table. We made another social media push, but word of mouth, if you guys can spread that, irrigation controllers, irrigation components, dishwashers, washing machines and toilets, so that's a great program, might as well take advantage of it.
Thank you, Ryan. Chief Peterson?
Mayor and city council members, no updates from me.
Very good. You and I talked right before the meeting about doing a public recognition ceremony for our new captain and our new sergeant, so look forward to getting that on the agenda as soon as it works for them.
Will do.
Good. Congratulations to them both. Very nice. Chief Newman?
Mayor and council, no updates.
And Kevin?
No updates.
All right. Let's bring it to council updates. Council member Roberts?
I attended the last planning commission meeting. It was nice to, to have a, a meeting again. And so, a, a exciting project going in a strip center with Five Below, just north of Northern, so excited for that. And then also worked with Chair Gerard in finding two great candidates that will come forward to backfill some of the positions on the planning commission.
Yeah, great to get those done. And council member Valento?
Last week, I attended the Washington County Long Range Transportation Plan, and it was a good conversation. There was a lot of folks there from, of course, across the county. There was staff there, there were other elected officials. So, just talked about needs, wants, issues, and just, they laid out the plan, so it was very preliminary in the plan, so much more to come.
Thank you. Council member Hesnick?
Yes, the other day, I met with Christina and a group that's trying to develop the Veterans Memorial thing, and some of the challenges that they've got going right now, it's getting, been really tough, what I want, because of infrastructure issues like water mains and sewer mains and all kinds of things. So, we're working, trying to figure out where, where this might happen. The problem is until they get a site, they can't develop a plan, which means they can't get the bids, which means that they can't, they're not going to get the funding until that point, so we're working on it. That's all I can tell you.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Council member Erickson?
No updates tonight.
All right. Just quick update from me. Council member Hesnick and I attended the EDA meeting just before this, had a good discussion on the planned EDA work plan for 2025, or 2024 and 2025. That is going to come to council for your review prior to EDA adoption, so look forward to bringing that forward. Also had a closed session related to consideration of sale of city land, which will also be coming back to council for some feedback, so that's also exciting. I mentioned Representative Anderson's open house tomorrow at 5:30, and then social 5:30 presentation at 6:00. And just circling back on EDA, council member Hesnick and I did interview one of the two applicants for the open EDA position, so look forward to having some recommendations very soon on that position as well and getting that filled. Again, thank you for making the reminder for our workshop is on Tuesday at 6:30 instead of Monday, since Monday is a holiday. And that being the end of our planned agenda, I will move that we move into a closed session. Council will go into a closed session pursuant to section Minnesota Statute 13D 05 subdivision 2B for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to its authority. There's a motion, is there a second to move us into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And just a note, this is the last item on our agenda, so after ending that closed session, we will come back into here, into open session just to adjourn. We don't have any additional planned agenda items this evening, so we are in closed session.